Okay, everyone, we're going to get started. As I said at the beginning, my name is Sam Bernbaum. I am a project manager. I'm sorry to the manager of mine. Thank you. My name is Sam Bernbaum. I am a project manager at Settlement Housing Fund, which is part of Harlem River Preservation. Before we get started, could I'd like them the interpretation lines to introduce themselves. Would Spanish please unmute and introduce yourself? Spanish line, could you please unmute and introduce yourself?
Hola, hola, hola a todos. Este es el intérprete español. Mi nombre es Scott Bob y Patricia Alcibar y estamos aquí a sus órdenes. Por favor, si quieren ingresar en el chat de español, tienes que, tienes que, un segundo. Tienes que marcar al número seis cuatro seis cinco cinco ocho ocho seis cinco seis y ahí puedes ingresar y entrar el código de la reunión inglés.
Thanks very much. And the Mandarin line? Thanks so much. Okay, so just a quick note as always about the format for the meeting today. We dropped off a printed copy of this presentation to every apartment at Harlem River Houses and Harlem River Two. If you're listening to this audio over the phone, you can follow along using that printed copy. We will publish a video recording of this town hall meeting on our website. By the end of next week, it might actually be a little bit longer than that than next week. This time it might be a little bit into the week following, but we will publish a video online to our website, www.harlemriver.org. Everyone will be muted during the presentation and we will have a Q and A session at the end of the meeting. To ask a question, you can first of all type a question anytime you want in the Q and A window. We will either type a response or we will answer the question out loud during the Q and A session at the end of the meeting. You can also raise your hand in Zoom and I see a few people have already done so. I will call on you during the Q and A, ask you to unmute your microphone so you can ask your question and then we will be able to communicate directly. If you're using a smartphone and you would like to raise your hand, just tap the screen of the Zoom meeting. A toolbar will appear, tap Participants and then tap Raise Hand. If you're using a computer and you'd like to raise your hand, move your mouse on the Zoom meeting screen, which will reveal a toolbar, click Participants and click Raise Hand. And finally, if you are calling into the meeting using a telephone, just dial star nine to raise your hand. So our agenda for this evening. First, we will overview the timeline for the PACT conversion at Harlem River Houses and Harlem River Two. We will then talk about the upcoming property management transition. We'll talk about how to request repairs in your apartment after the PACT conversion occurs. How to pay your rent after the PACT conversion occurs. We'll provide an update on jobs and training opportunities for residents. We'll provide an update on social services that you will have access to after the conversion occurs. And then the bulk of the meeting will be a presentation from NICA to give you more information and many of it is, much of it is information you've already received. So it will be reminders about the project-based Section Eight program, including a summary of the PACT program, talking about PACT stakeholders, overviewing the Section Eight program, giving you contact information for various different things if you have any questions or concerns. And then letting you know about services and resources for Section Eight residents. And then finally, we will finish with a Q and A section, session. Okay, so to get started, the timeline for the PACT conversion. The PACT conversion I am pleased to announce is scheduled to occur next Thursday, that is one week from today, on February seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two. As of February eighteenth, so that is next Friday, the very next day, CNC Apartment Management will be the new property manager for Harlem River Houses and Harlem River Two. NICA will continue to own the buildings and the land of Harlem River and Harlem River Two and will oversee the property management and construction process under the PACT program. If you have not already done so, and the vast majority of residents have done this already, but if you haven't done so already, please contact CNC Apartment Management to sign your project-based Section Eight lease. CNC Apartment Management is reachable at two one two three four eight three two four eight, extension seven three nine. That's two one two three four eight three two four eight, extension seven three nine. And as a reminder, your signed lease guarantees your resident rights and protections. The renovation work at Harlem River Houses and Harlem River Two will begin in late February, so in the weeks following the PACT conversion date. And CNC will provide an update soon about the schedule for the construction work, including the schedule, an updated schedule for all of the, for many of the temporary moves, the ones that will occur early on in construction. So please look out for that. It will be a written update for everyone and of course, we will continue to have these town hall meetings to talk about updates and to answer questions. I'm now going to turn it over to CNC Apartment Management, Priscilla Porter, the general manager, to go over the project property management transition, how to request repairs and how to pay your rent, Priscilla.
Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here with you this evening. So for the property management transition, once the PACT conversion occurs, CNC Apartment Management will become the property manager for Harlem River Houses and Harlem River Two, also known as the Tower. You may be familiar with some of the CNC staff already. They are currently on site wearing orange vests with the Harlem River Preservation logo. CNC currently works from a temporary office at Harlem River located at two ten West one hundred and fifty-third Street, the Old Library. A few weeks after the conversion, CNC will move to the permanent management office at Harlem River located at two thirty-one West one hundred and fifty-first Street. CNC's office hours for walk-in service are Monday through Friday, eight thirty AM to three thirty PM. Next slide, please. Next slide. After the PACT conversion, CNC will be responsible for all repairs and maintenance at Harlem River Houses and Harlem River Two. CNC will be responsible for all repairs after the PACT conversion occurs, including all work tickets that are open at the time of closing. To submit a maintenance request after the PACT conversion, contact us at harlemriver@ccmanagers.com. Again, harlemriver@ccmanagers.com or call six four six four six one three zero zero seven, Monday through Friday, eight thirty AM to five thirty PM. For emergency man, excuse me, for emergency maintenance during non-business hours, such as lack of heat, hot water and/or flooding conditions, please contact us at again, six four six four six one three zero zero seven. Non-business hours being weekdays after five thirty PM or on weekends or holidays. Next slide, please. So after the PACT conversion, residents should submit their portion of the rent to CNC Apartment Management. Residents should submit their rental payment from NICA for February twenty twenty-two. So again, for February twenty twenty-two, residents should submit their rental payments to NICA. So all rented, all rental payments thereafter should be submitted in one of the following ways. And you will also receive this information in the mail on or with March twenty twenty two rental statements. Option number one, you can submit rental payments via check or money order to Harlem River Preservation, PO Box two five zero nine eight, Tampa, Florida, three three six two two. Option two, you can also drop your rent to our office at the current location, which is two ten West one hundred and fifty-third Street, the Old Library. At about three weeks after the conversion, the location will be two thirty-one West one hundred and fifty-first Street. Option three, you can pay your rent online by visiting www.clicpay.com backslash CC. But please note, fees online, there will be fees that can be applied to online payments. For questions regarding your rent bill after the PACT conversion, please contact us at harlemriver@ccmanagers.com by calling six four six four six one three zero zero seven and pressing an option that you will be prompted to hear by listening to an option for billing. This slide mentions three, but when you listen to the telephone prompt, you will hear rental payment and that option will be one and you'll have updated information to each of your homes. Thank you.
Great. And before I pass it over to Judy Gerena at L and M to talk about jobs, I just want to go back for one second. Let me see if I can do that with the slide. So just to reiterate what Priscilla said at the bottom, who to call with your questions about rent payment. We are going to be dropping off at every single apartment, a one-page document that gives you all of the information about how to reach our team. So you don't need to worry about copying this information down that you're seeing. This will be in writing to you, dropped off at your apartment. It will tell you what number to call if you have various different concerns. It's one number. And then, once you call the number, you'll hear a menu of options and you just select the right option for what you need. So again, no need to copy all of this information down. We will be dropping that off at your door within the next week or so. Okay, Judy Gerena, do you want to talk about updates on hiring and training at Harlem River and Harlem River Two?
Sure, thank you so much. Can you hear me, Sam?
I can.
Okay, great. Seem to have some video issues, but we'll move forward. Welcome, everyone, and thank you so much for joining us. My name is Judy Gerena. I will be the compliance manager on this project in charge of the local hiring and placements. And we are super excited that we're finally getting to the point where we can start interviewing. We're still a couple of weeks away from the interviewing start, but just wanted to give you some updates. We had our first OSHA training in January. We were able to train twenty Harlem River residents and we are very excited to move them on to the next phase and start interviewing in the next couple of weeks. We will be partnering with Local Seventy-nine to offer additional training and placement opportunities. Local Seventy-nine is a labor's union. And we're also partnering with many organizations within the community, including Building Skills and NICA Reis to also connect residents with placement opportunities and job opportunities here. We've created a website where we'll be, where we will be posting our open opportunities live and we've created a QR code that you can scan with your phone camera so that you can follow along with our opportunities as they become available. Next slide, please. Great. So on the screen, you have just a brief overview of what's to come. We will be hiring permanent positions on the property management side, construction positions and some requirements. So we'll start with the permanent. The permanent positions will be with CNC Management. These positions are open now, and so if you are interested in applying for them, feel free to reach out by either dropping off your resume, which will provide some additional information on that, or by visiting our website. So these opportunities are opening, are open now and you don't need much experience to apply. Just a desire to work. The construction positions will open in the early spring and so we are collecting and gathering resumes for candidates there. You see on your screen the available positions that we're looking to hire for general labor, painting. The main thing that you would need is to be an authorized NICA resident and to have your OSHA and authorized to work in the United States. And so again, not much experience is needed. Again, our requirements are that you need to be an authorized NICA resident, you need proof of work authorization, your driver's license or ID, an updated resume and your OSHA certification, which we will provide additional training moving forward. Next slide, please. Great. So if you're interested in any of the positions that you saw on your screen, what you would need to do is reach out to us, either drop off your resume at two ten West one fifty-third Street. We have a picture of the Dropbox right there. Simply drop off your resume at the office there so we can reach out. Or reach out to Reis if you do not have a resume or need assistance in putting together your resume or updating that. Reis offers an array of services, super helpful. So feel free to reach out to receive free advice and information about putting together your resume. Thank you so very much.
Thank you so much, Judy. So next, I would like to pass it over to Remus Jason to talk a bit about social services at Harlem River Houses and Harlem River Two.
Thanks, Sam. Hi, thanks, Sam. And hi, this is Remus Jason. I'm the executive director of PSS. We're thrilled to be part of this initiative. PSS is, for those of you who don't know, is the social services partner. And for Harlem River Houses and Harlem River Two, we're a multi-service nonprofit organization. We're actually celebrating our sixtieth anniversary this year. Our mission is to strengthen the capacity of older New Yorkers, their families and communities to thrive. We encourage you to visit our website, sign up for our e-newsletters. And I'm actually gonna pass it along to Matthew, who's going to go through some of our services. Matthew?
Next slide, please. So I am the director of the social services at PSS. And I think it's hopeful to note that PSS has had a presence within Harlem for essentially the last six decades. So we're looking forward to becoming a part of the Harlem River community. So right now, we are planning a number of different programs, activities, events and workshops for after the conversion takes place. A large portion of what we're planning is based on a survey that was conducted last year in which we gave you the opportunity to tell us the kinds of of programming and events that you would like to see once the conversion takes place. So first of all, we do have two social workers on site who have already started to provide assistance to residents. So consultations with them are ongoing right now and will continue. And they are going to be the people who are facilitating various types of groups and coordinating different types of events with them. We're going to look to have our programming geared towards all populations, older adults, adolescents, children and families. So there's going to be all kinds of programming that's targeted as well as for the entirety of the community. And then lastly, we do have, we do have a program called PSS Life University that gives us the opportunity to, that gives us the opportunity to do virtual programming across our other operations. So there's going to be the opportunity to tap into the kinds of activities and programming that PSS does at large. Next slide, please. So after the conversion, we will be supporting onsite as we've already been doing right now. I believe that that is a typo there. It's two eleven L apartment, correct? I just want to, I just want to clarify that. Two eleven L.
It's two ten L.
Oh, it's two ten. Okay, sorry. So two ten L apartment one A is where our two social workers, Eileen Lopez and Rodney Guzman are stationed right now. They are available Monday to Friday from nine o'clock to five o'clock. We have provided their phone numbers as well as their email addresses. So if there is something that you would like to speak with them about or you would like to come to two eleven L, I'm sorry, two ten L apartment one A, you can, you can meet with them in person. And we look forward to continuing to become a part of the Harlem River community. Thank you, Sam.
Thank you, Matthew. So I'm now going to turn it over to NICA for the remainder of this meeting until we get to the Q and A portion. NICA will be presenting information about the project-based Section Eight program. Much, I believe all of this information has been presented in the past, but it's just before the PACT conversion. So of course, it's really important that we just, that NICA reminds everyone about the great resources that are available to you and just the contours of this program. So with that, I'm going to pass it over to Heather Beck to start presenting for NICA. And Heather, please do prompt me when you need me to change the slide.
Of course, I will. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. All right. Hi, everyone. Thank you for letting us join tonight. As Sam said, my name is Heather Beck. I'm a senior policy analyst within NICA's real estate department and I'm really glad to join you this evening as you near some of the final steps before the Harlem River developments convert to project-based Section Eight. So I'm going to start with a few slides that you might have seen in previous presentations, just to cover kind of a general overview of the PACT program. And we like to do this just to make sure folks have had a chance to see this, if they've been unable to attend any prior meeting and to clarify any, any questions. So we use the chart on this slide to illustrate NICA's current funding situation. The blue bars on this slide represent the estimated cost to fully modernize NICA's housing stock. And as you can see, the, the blue bars have grown from, from twenty, or two thousand and six, when the need was just about six billion dollars to repair our buildings to about thirty-one billion in twenty seventeen. You know, we're in twenty twenty-two now, so we, we think that the cost has grown even larger and our estimated need to be over forty billion dollars. And then the orange bars on this chart reflect the, the level of funding we actually have received from the federal government each year. And you can really see how it just pales in comparison to the, to the need we have. And so PACT is one of our, our main tools that we, we can use to provide the comprehensive repairs that are needed at our buildings. PACT uses HUD's Rental Assistance Demonstration Program, or RAD, by changing the source of funding of the building from Section Nine, the traditional public housing program, to the project-based Section Eight program, which we'll talk about kind of at length tonight. Both of these programs are funded by the federal government and managed by HUD. But unlike the traditional public housing program, the project-based Section Eight program has seen increases in annual subsidy and provides us a twenty-year contract from HUD that is renewed indefinitely. So it really provides a stable footing for, for the development. We take out a loan to, to pay for the repairs that are, that are needed for the development and that is a public loan from the city's New York Affordable, or sorry, the city's Affordable Housing Finance Agency, known as the Housing Development Corporation, or HDC. And HUD has approved the application for Harlem River. So in exchange for, you know, allowing us to convert to the project-based Section Eight program, Harlem River Partners, you know, must address all the documented repair needs that we've identified at your, your different developments. They must maintain permanent affordability and ensure your rights and protections are preserved. Go to the next slide. Awesome. So PACT works by forming public and private partnerships. And under the, this model, NICA will lease the land and the building to Harlem River Preservation. And they will conduct all of the necessary repairs, serve as the new onsite property managers and provide enhanced social services and community programs, a lot of what you just heard about. NICA's role will change, but we will remain a critical stakeholder at the development. And tonight, we're going to dive a little deeper into kind of the new role that NICA will play as the Section Eight administrator. Go to the next slide. So as I mentioned briefly before, you know, in exchange for converting to the Section Eight program, HUD requires that we will address all those repair needs at your development. And at a very high level, it can fall into the different categories that we've listed on this slide. That's the sites and grounds, the buildings, your building systems and apartments. And I think you've heard from the team at Harlem River Preservation, probably a few times now, what the different and specific plans are for your buildings. And so these images are, are some examples of how that, how the investments have looked at different developments. But you know, it'll look a little different at Harlem River. But one thing we always like to stress when we show these images is that these are not just cosmetic, our surface-level repairs. We're really going in and getting to the root cause of a lot of the problems and issues that you see in your day-to-day. And this is really kind of a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to make an investment into our buildings and the grounds and your, your shared spaces. And so with that, we can go to the next slide. Awesome. So we, we do like to note that your rights and protections will transition from the public housing program to the Section Eight program. I, you know, we can share more resources on these. They are also on our, our website. But your rent will be thirty percent of your adjusted household income, which is how it's calculated today if you're a Section Nine public housing resident. Your tenant association will have the right to organize and will continue to receive funding. You will have the right to renew your lease. In fact, it'll automatically renew each year. You will not be re-screened once the development converts. So you will automatically kind of transition to the Section Eight program. You will be able to apply to add relatives to your Section Eight household. And those authorized members of your household will continue to have succession rights. You will be able to have grievance hearings and you will also have the opportunity to apply for jobs, just as you heard a few minutes ago. All right, we'll go to the next slide. Okay, so we're gonna kind of dive deeper, as we said, into the, the project-based Section Eight program. And tonight, we're going to share kind of more details about that, what, what that means for you as a, as a project-based project-based Section Eight resident. So we'll cover kind of who the stakeholders are, give you a little overview of the Section Eight program and NICA's role as the administrator. We'll describe who to contact for those, you know, common questions and issues you might have and then share some resources and services. Go to the next slide. All right. So this slide is really meant to kind of take a step back and show big picture who all the stakeholders are involved in the PACT conversion process. And as you can see, there are several. NICA residents and your resident association continue to be key partners along with NICA throughout the process. But we'll work hand-in-hand with the CNC team as your new property manager and, you know, PSS as your social, social service provider. And what we're going to do over the next few slides is kind of talk through the responsibilities of each one of these, these different stakeholder groups. Then we'll go to the next slide. All right. So the first one is residents and the resident association. So as a project-based Section Eight participant, some of your responsibilities will shift and you'll work with new partners to complete things like your annual certification or who you're going to submit your work tickets or repair quests to. So this slide outlines a few of those responsibilities, and I'll just talk through them now. You are responsible for reviewing, signing, and following the terms of your new lease. Thank you to those, and probably most residents have have signed their new leases. And it is your responsibility to review, you know, your household details that are that are listed on your lease and that are listed in the section eight participant list in the self-service portal. If you don't have an account for the self-service portal, Melissa from the leased housing department will share how you can do that later in this presentation. It's your responsibility to confirm or apply to add any household members to your to your section eight household. You will now submit your monthly or your repair request to your new property manager CNC management. You will also pay your your monthly rent to your new property manager. You will need to permit access to your apartment for repairs and inspections. And, you know, you'll continue to submit your annual and any interim recertifications to Nycha. But this will just be through our leased housing department as a section eight resident. And you should continue to attend your monthly tenant association meetings and meet with your resident association. They will continue to meet with your new property management team and probably the whole Harley Harlem River Preservation Team on a monthly basis. Okay, I'm going to the next slide. All right, so Harlem River Preservation, they're the PAC developer for this project. In that role, they are responsible for the following things. They are going to continue to host meetings with residents much like this one to share details and updates on the repairs that will take place. And we'll continue to meet with households during the temporary move process. They will oversee all of the design and repairs that are conducted. It's their responsibility to ensure that the full physical needs of the development are addressed. And they will coordinate with the property managers and social service providers. And they will also continue to communicate and share updates with Nycha about the repair timeline. Let me go to the next slide. All right, so your new property manager is CNC management. They will be the the company that you work with kind of on a day to day basis. And I think earlier you got some details on on how to how you'll be doing that. But it is their role as property managers to oversee the day to day upkeep of your apartment, the building, and the grounds. You will submit your repair requests to them, and they'll be the ones who respond in a timely manner. You know, they will ensure that all residents are compliant with the terms of their lease. They will collect rent from you on a monthly basis. And if Nycha adjusts your portion of the rent based on a change in your household income or household composition, they will be responsible for adjusting any rent charges that you see in your monthly statement. The property management team will also meet with the resident association on a on a monthly basis. And they will also work with Nycha's leased housing department to fill any vacant vacancies in the buildings. Go to the next slide. Okay, so the social service providers, you just heard from from them. PSS, you know, in their role, they're really responsible for providing services, resources, and programming to residents at all buildings. I think everyone had the opportunity to complete the needs assessment that was conducted last year. And just want to thank you for your participation in that. They will continue to, you know, play an important role at the development and connect residents to resources through the REES office. Go to the next slide. All right, so the Nycha's slide, which is a a critical stakeholder in the pact program. We just want to discuss how we'll have a a new or a different role after the conversion. So Nycha will continue to own the land and the buildings. No one from the Harlem River Preservation Team will own any buildings or land as a pact partner. And the team enters into a ground lease with Nycha. And in our new role, we will also administer the section eight program through our leased housing department. That department will ensure that regular inspections are conducted in your apartment. These are called housing quality standard inspections. And they essentially ensure that your apartment is kept up to a high standard and maintained by the new property manager. As the administering department, Nycha will maintain the waitlist for any vacant apartments. And we'll coordinate with the property management team to fill those vacancies. We will also monitor the performance of the property manager through monthly reports and collect feedback from residents and the tenant association. We'll meet with that. We'll meet with the tenant association on a quarterly basis. And we want to ensure all of you that there are many ways that Nycha remains an active partner and presence at the development. And and I think that's it for this slide. Yeah, I'm gonna I'm gonna turn it over to Melissa Renwick. She's the senior advisor in our leased housing department, and she's going to talk a bit more about the section eight program and how that program works.
Thanks, Heather. And next slide, please. So good evening, everybody. My name is Melissa Renwick. I am a senior advisor to the executive vice president for Nycha's Leased Housing Program. I'm just here tonight to share with you more information about how section eight will work and also to just assure you that Nycha is still going to be a daily presence for you guys. As a section eight minister, we are going to be very involved because you were going to be project based section eight participants. So Nycha's Leased Housing Department oversees Nycha's section eight program. And we're operating the largest section eight program in the country. And we actually have just crested over ninety one thousand families that we serve. So the data on this slide slightly out of date because we've just converted a few properties in December. But we are the largest section eight program in the country, and we work with about twenty five thousand private landlords in the city. Through PACT, you were going to convert from a public housing resident to a project based section eight resident or section eight participant. So if you are currently an active authorized public housing resident at Harlem River one and two, you are going to be converting through PACT to project based section eight. There is no re-screening, but you do need to sign your PAC lease and make sure you sign those PVV tenancy addendums because those are critical in making that transition from a public housing resident to a project based section eight participant. Next slide, please. So after conversion, so after Harlem River went into convert, if you have any changes in your household income or your family composition, just like you would do today, you are going to report those changes to Nycha. And just like you would do today, you are going to report those changes on Nycha's tenant self-service portal. When this property converts, Nycha is going to close your public housing case on the portal, and we are going to open your section eight keys. So when you log into your same tenant self-service portal account with your same username and password, you will now have your section eight account. It will be there and visible. And everything that you need to do to manage your section eight benefits, you can do that through the tenant self-service account. So if someone is leaving your household, you would need to do an interim recertification and report that a household member has left. If somebody has gotten a job, you would need to do an interim recertification and report that there is a new stream of income in your household. You are going to do your annual recertification with Nycha still. Remember, this is an annual obligation that you have as a public housing resident, and you will continue to have this obligation as a Nycha section eight participant. So your annual recertification is still going to happen with Nycha. It's still going to happen online through the tenant self-service portal, except for now. Nycha's leased housing department is going to be crunching those numbers for you. We will send out a notice to you to let you know that your annual recertification is due. And we send that notice typically five months in advance of your due date. So once you get that notice, it is critical for you to start gathering all of your household income information and make time to log into your tenant self-service portal to complete your online annual recertification. If you're interested, if you have questions about how Nycha calculated your tenant share portion of the rent, you can have an informal conference or a hearing with Nycha's Leased Housing Department. And you can call Nycha's customer contact center at seven one eight seven zero seven 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 one, and somebody can talk can walk you through how your tenant share was calculated. When we let you know what your tenant share is, we give you a notice. That's called a voucher change notice. And on that notice itself, you have the ability to request an informal conference or a hearing if you just don't understand how Nycha calculated it, or if you don't agree with the calculation that Nycha did. If you're interested in transferring, that is also something that you would contact Nycha's Leased Housing Department about. If you want to transfer within your development, if you need an appropriate sized unit, or you need an accessible unit, or you need to move to a lower floor within your development. Those are all types of transfer requests that would happen with between Nycha and also between CNC management. So you would first need to go onto the tenant self-service portal and submit a transfer request. And then Nycha and CNC management would work to make sure we could find the unit available at the property that met your needs. After one year of project based assistance, if you are interested in transferring out of Harlem River onto the private rental market, you can submit a transfer request through the tenant self-service portal. And you would be, if you are income eligible for tenant based assistance, you would be issued a tenant based section eight transfer voucher. This would allow you to transfer out onto the private rental market and rent in a unit with a standard section eight voucher. Next slide, please. And so we talked about this a little bit when I just talked about transfers. If you need a reasonable accommodation, and you might need to move to a lower floor or to a bigger apartment or to an accessible unit, and these are considered reasonable accommodation transfers. So you would go onto the tenant self-service portal, and you would request a transfer, and you would indicate that the reason you're requesting this transfer is because you need a reasonable accommodation. And then you would tell us what that accommodation is. So that you need an accessible unit, or you need to move to a lower floor, or you need to move to a different building. Whatever it is, you would just let us know. If you need to add or remove family members from your household, again, you would do that with section eight with Nycha, and you could do that through the tenant self-service portal, and that would be the interim change request. And you would do that to add or remove a household member. If you feel that property management is at making repairs, you could request a special inspection, and you could do this by calling the Nycha customer contact center and request a special inspection. Nycha will send an inspector out to inspect your unit. And if there are any violations, then we would issue a notice to property management, and we would give them a period of time to make those repairs before we suspend the subsidy payments. Again, if you want to request an inspection, you would call Nycha's customer contact center. If you just want to find out when your next inspection is scheduled, you could do that either by calling the customer contact center, or you could go onto your tenant self-service portal, and that information is available to you in your section eight account. Next slide, please. So if you having you have questions about how to pay your rent, or if you have accrued rental arrears, and you want to talk about a repayment agreement or have a discussion about those rental arrears, you're going to contact your property management, and your property management after conversion is going to be CNC apartment management. So that is who you're going to call, that's who you're going to call and who you're going to speak with if you have questions about how to pay rent or if you have rental arrears. If you need to submit a repair request, again, we heard a little bit about that earlier this evening. That's going to happen with CNC management. You are going to submit repair requests to them. If you have questions about your lease, again, CNC management is going to answer those questions. CNC management is your property manager. So if you have questions about your lease, you should ask them about it, and they can have a conversation with you. If you have some sort of emergency as it relates to your apartment, heat, lack of heat, hot water, if there's an elevator outage or there's flooding, again, all those types of issues will be directed at your new property management, which is CNC management. Next slide, please. So more issues that you would raise to CNC apartment management. So if you needed to move to a lower floor, we talked about earlier how the first thing that you would do is submit a transfer request to Nycha and tell us that you needed a reasonable accommodation. And then the next thing you would do is you would need to go to your property management office and tell them Nycha approved your transfer, and you need to move to a lower floor. CNC management will then work with you to see if we can identify a lower unit that would meet your needs. If you need modifications in your apartment, maybe you need grab bars, or you might need a higher toilet seat or lower kitchen cabinets. Those are conversations that you could have with CNC management, and they would work with you to find out what modifications you need in your unit to accommodate your disability. If you need to register a pet or a service animal, again, you're going to go to your property management office, CNC property management, and you're going to have a conversation with them about how to register your pet or your service animal. And if you want to get involved with your resident association, CNC can help you with that, too. They can direct you to who your resident association president is and let you know how to get involved. Next slide, please. And so what are the ways that you can contact Nycha as a section eight resident? We, there are three ways that you could typically get in touch with us. And the first would be to call the customer contact center. This is the main point of contact for both public housing and section eight residents. It's seven one eight seven zero seven 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 one. Nycha has two walk-in centers. They are at seven eighty seven Atlantic Avenue in Brooklyn and one Fordham Plaza in the Bronx. These walk-in centers have been closed since March of twenty twenty due to COVID. And we remain hopeful that they will reopen, and when they do, we'll provide updates to everyone. The other way to to stay in touch with Nycha is through your tenant self-service portal. So again, the tenant self-service portal is really key to making sure that you know what's going on with your section eight benefits, and also to making making sure that you're submitting requests to Nycha or doing your annual recertification on time. Next slide, please. So we're going to spend a little bit of time talking about your annual income recertification. This is a mandatory obligation for both public housing and section eight residents. So when you were a public housing resident, you had to do this every year with Nycha. You still need to do this every year with Nycha. But now Nycha's section eight program is going to be processing your annual recertification. You are not going to have the same annual recertification date after conversion. We are going to sort of put Harlem River into our section eight portfolio. And you will have a new cycle that your annual recertification exists in. But like I said, we are going to give you a notice five months in advance. And so when you get that notice, you should make sure that you can log into your tenant self-service account, that you know your username and your password. And then you should start gathering all of your income documents for your family. Remember, when we're doing our annual, we're reporting all of the income in our household. We're reporting all the people who live in our unit, and we're reporting income for everybody, including people who are on fixed income, people who are minors. Every single person's income is being reported to Nycha. If you need assistance in completing your annual recertification, you can call Nycha's customer contact center. You can also visit your property management office, and someone can assist you. If you need a paper packet, if you really can't use the tenant self-service portal, then you would call Nycha's customer contact center and request a paper packet. You will need to make a request for a paper packet every year because we really want to encourage people to use the self-service portal because it really helps us get complete annual recertifications because it makes sure that you fill out every part of that annual that you're required to do, and you don't miss something. When we do paper, sometimes we accidentally miss questions, and then it takes a longer time for Nycha to do that recertification. So if possible, we would love for you to do this online. If it's not possible for that to happen, or if you can't get assistance in the management office to do it online, then you can call the customer contact center and ask for a paper packet. But again, you must complete your annual recertification. This is a mandatory obligation to maintain your section eight benefits. And so every year, you need to make sure that you're doing an annual recertification with Nycha. This obligation does not change because of PACT. This is a mandatory obligation that you continue to have as a resident of Nycha. Okay, next slide, please. This is a mandatory obligation that you continue to have as a resident of NICA. Okay? Next slide, please. So as we said, you need to make sure that you submit, once you get that notice in the mail that tells you your annuals do, gather that, those documents and submit them to NICA. The sooner the better, but no later than the due date on the notice. If you need to get additional information about how to do this, visit NICA's website under our Section 8 tab. There's lots of information about how to do your interim and your annual. There's a video that you can watch. There are guides that you can download that are in various languages. So if you have questions, please do check our website or call the customer contact center. Somebody there can assist you. Next slide, please. So we've talked a lot about the self-service portal. We talked a lot about the self-service portal. The self-service portal is really a key to managing your benefits with NICA. If you don't already have an account, please make sure you create one. If you need help creating one, then you can call the customer contact center and someone can help you create that account. This is your way of really staying in touch with your benefits and making sure that you can communicate with NICA in real time. Next slide, please. So what are the items that you can do on NICA's self-service portal in terms of managing your Section 8 benefits? One thing that you can do is you can go online and you can see who are the authorized members of your household. So you can go online and see who NICA has listed as the authorized members of your household. And if someone's missing, you can make sure you submit a request to add that person to your household composition. Again, you can notify us if there's been a change in income. Either maybe you've lost income or you've gained income. You would report that to NICA through the self-service portal by submitting an interim recertification request. You can submit your annual recertification. Again, this is the mandatory annual obligation. So you do this through the self-service portal. If you need to transfer or you need a reasonable accommodation related to your subsidy, you would submit both of those types requests on the self-service portal. You can upload documents to the portal. You can, and you can do this on a smartphone or a tablet or at a desktop computer or a laptop. And the portal is a really flexible tool that is really there for you as a resource. You can also view your next inspection date or reschedule an inspection. So if you check the online self-service portal and you see, oh man, I have an inspection next week and I'm just not going to be able to be home. You can just request that that be rescheduled and NICA will reschedule that inspection. Next slide, please. So we're going to go through some slides to show you a little bit of what this portal looks like. So after you've entered your username and your password, you would get to your landing page. And it will show you your Section 8 account and you will have your new Section 8 case number. And it will tell you the status of your voucher. And then if you want to go into the portal to see or to do something with your account, you could click on manage your account. Next slide, please. And then once you click on manage your account, you get to the main dashboard. And so as you can see that this dashboard has an enormous amount of stuff going on. On one side, it's all of your case information. It tells you everything that's going on. It's a snapshot of your benefits. It tells you the NICA share of your rent, the tenant share of the rent, your full contract rent. It tells you the last time you submitted an annual recertification to us and when your next one is due. It tells us, tells you the last time NICA inspected your unit and when your next inspection would be due. It tells you your lease, your lease start date and your lease end date. And also tells you the date that you first joined the Section 8 program. So this is really important information. So and then each one of the buttons or the, that are available, that they, they, they are the starting point for every single one of those requests. So if you want to do your annual recertification, you click on the annual recertification icon. If you want to request a transfer, you would click on the Section 8 transfer icon and so forth. So this really is how you manage your Section 8 benefits with NICA today. And if you ever need help with the portal, you should call NICA's customer contact center or visit your property management office. And people can help you navigate if you want to sort of get used to this new tool. Next slide, please. So we're going to go down the rabbit hole of doing an annual recertification. So you're going to click on annual. And then it's going to pull up your annual recertification that's due. And then you would click on continue. Next slide, please. So once you get to that, it's going to ask you questions about, do you need to remove a contact or add somebody? And if you do, you would click one button or you would click continue to continue to your annual recertification. Next slide, please. And this is where we are, Section 8 resources. Heather, I think I'm going to kick it back to you for this slide. I think you normally do this one.
Yep, sure. Thanks. And I just want to stress, we just have a few more slides. But all of this information will be delivered to you in a welcome packet that you'll get shortly after the conversion. I know there's a lot of information that we've talked through. But you'll, you'll have something in printed form that you can reference. And you can always reference the presentation materials that were dropped off at your household. So don't feel like you have to have all of this memorized right now. We just want to show it and share it in case, in case you have questions right now about these, these processes. But we also just want to take a minute to acknowledge that you might have some questions about, you know, utilizing the NICA Reis office and other services and programs. And so you can go to the next slide and I'll just touch on that briefly. Awesome. So through, through the Section 8 program, you can still access the, the Reis, the NICA Reis office. And through the NICA Reis office, you have access to the Family Self-Sufficiency Program and Section 3 job opportunities that might not, that you might have interest in that, that are not related to the construction or renovation work taking place at Harlem River. So very quickly, just want to share what the Family Self-Sufficiency Program is. It's referred to as the FSS program. And it allows residents the ability to grow a savings account as your household's income increases. So essentially, your increase in your income is not counted towards your, your rent. Any adjustments to your rent and that additional money is put into an escrow account if you're enrolled in the program. And when you're enrolled in the FSS program, you can also access education and career counseling services. And there are job, other job training opportunities and some money management resources. So we encourage you, if you have questions about the FSS program or you want to learn a bit more, there are some contact details on this slide. It's like forty. And you know, if you have Section 3, your interest in job opportunities outside of this conversion, outside of the construction or property management realm, you can still express interest in, in those through the Reis office. And you know, they're a great resource for you and they'll always be an option for you. But just make sure that you're kind of registered with the Reis Section 3 job opportunities so that they can alert you when there are job openings and positions available. And I think with that, I will turn it back over to the Harlem River Preservation Team. But we can answer questions should folks have any.
Great. Thank you so much, Heather and Melissa. This is Sam again from Harlem River Preservation. So we're now going to start the Q and A portion of the meeting. We have about thirty minutes for Q and A. So just a quick reminder about how to ask questions. You can type your question in the Q and A. We'll either type a response or answer your question out loud. You can raise your hand and zoom and I will call on you. Then you'll be able to unmute your microphone. You can ask your question. If you're using a smartphone, you can tap the screen and then tap participants and then raise hand. If you're using a computer, you can move, move your mouse to reveal a toolbar, click participants and click raise hand. And if you are calling into the meeting using a telephone, just dial star nine to raise your hand. So with that, we're going to start with Tricia. Would you please unmute and ask your question? Tricia, can you hear us?
Hello?
Hi, yes, we can hear you.
Yes, hi. Okay, you guys are promising us an awful lot. Like you're going to make things better with CNC management. But you know, you, you have, the big banks have a lot of investment in this, in this project. And CNC management, they took over Linden Houses. And to this day, they don't have any heat, any gas, any hot water, no elevator service. So how can we trust that you're going to do right by us? You know, there's also a lawsuit against this because HUD has not approved this. So why are you all in a rush to get this done?
Thanks so much for the question, Tricia. So to answer that, first of all, just to talk a little bit about the timing for work to occur. So it is correct that next week, the, the conversion will occur on February seventeenth. It is also correct that Harlem River Houses and Harlem River Two need a lot of repairs. Just for starters, there's no gas, no, no cooking gas at the tower, as we all know. So these are, these are long-term issues that have been sitting for a really long time. And the rehab, the, the construction process is going to take time. It's going to take time. We have a very detailed plan that we're going to execute. But it's not going to be, you know, February eighteenth rolls around and everything is different. So what we, we are asking for is something that's very difficult to ask for, which is patience. We are going to be there on day one. We'll have security on site, starting twenty-four seven, starting day one. Property management on site, starting day one, and we'll be starting with the construction process. It's not going to happen overnight. But I think we have a really strong team. It was a, it was a competitive process to, to, that NICA ran for, for this project. And I think we're really confident in our team's ability to, to make Harlem River a really beautiful and, and comfortable place to live. Ian, Ian Alundy or Melissa or Heather, do you want to talk just for a second again about the, the reasons for the, the introduction of, of the PACT program at Harlem River? Do you want to reiterate some of that? Why this program has been brought to NICA? Or why NICA just brought this program, sorry?
But they're lying to us. They're lying.
Thanks, Tricia. I just, I'm sorry. I just want to give NICA a second to, to answer.
Sure, we, we can, oh, Ian, Ali.
Okay. Hi, Tricia. Thanks for this question. My name is Ian Lundey. I'm a director with our real estate team. So just revisiting what Heather spoke about at the beginning of the presentation. NICA has a, an incredibly large capital backlog throughout our portfolio. So we need forty billion dollars across all of our sites. And Harlem River is just one of the sites that's in pretty, I'll say desperate need of repair. There are active health and safety issues with residents being on site. And our best resource to be able to bring investment to your homes is with the PACT program. We need to be able to switch over to the Section 8 program to be able to access additional funding. And we desperately need that funding to be able to invest in repairs for your homes there. There isn't federal subsidy available that we've received. And every day we wait, the, the health issues only get worse. So PACT is really the best tool we have. It is a tool that the federal government and HUD introduced and created. Everything we're doing remains under the authority of and facilitated by the public housing, the, the public housing authority. And this really is the best option we have to bring repairs to your homes today. So I know that there's a lot that's new and a lot that's changing. But it is really important that we're able to, to explain and, and really make sure that you, you understand the, the extent to which this is going to be a helpful option for residents at Harlem River.
Thanks so much, Ian. I'd like to move to another question. I know that there are many people with hands raised. So if we could move to the question from the caller with the, the last four digits of the number two six two nine. If you want to ask your question, you should be able to unmute.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
I'm well. And you?
I'm great. I'm great. Good to hear your voice.
Good, good. I'm calling about repairs. Will we receive tickets like we did before?
That's a great question. Can I have Priscilla from CNC Apartment Managers address the question of will residents receive maintenance tickets when they put in a maintenance request? Priscilla.
Hi, so we have a different, we have a different system that is used and we'll update. It's not the, the old type of, the traditional type of ticket system that is used. But residents will be updated in the same sense of the traditional ticket system that, that is used with what the status of a work order repair. So residents will be updated on how a work order has been received and processed and things of that nature completed and so on.
So Priscilla, could you just say, so just for clarity, can you just say for a second, like, let's say I'm a resident and I live in, you know, you know, at, at the tower, you know, apartment four B, and I have a problem with my unit. And I'd like to put in a, a request for maintenance. How would I go about and do that once CNC is the, the property manager and what, what would I expect? Priscilla, can you hear me?
Yep. I'm sorry. Can you hear?
You're breaking up a bit. Can I, can you try that again? Okay, do we have Doreen or Mike Prush from CNC who might be able to answer this question? It sounds like.
I'm sorry. I was talking and I hadn't unmuted. Forgive me.
Thanks, Doreen.
I was saying, I'm Doreen Isley and I'm the regional manager for CNC. And you're going to have three ways in order to put in a work request with us. You will be able to phone it in, you will be able to email it to us, or you will be able to walk into the office. Our requests and all of the requests we receive to you are uploaded immediately into a system we call YARDI. And all of the history of the apartment is kept in one place and always accessible to us. You will receive confirmation from us that we received it. You will also get confirmation as to when we will be there to do the actual repair for you. It's going to be a little different than what you've been accustomed to. But I think that you will see that our, our ability to track it and follow up and to notify you will be well worth it.
Thanks so much, Doreen. And it looks like Priscilla is going to try to log back in. Sorry about those technical issues, Priscilla. Okay, let's move on. And do we, let's check on the translation line. Do we have any, do we have any questions on the Spanish line? Spanish translation line, any questions?
I'm asking for questions on this, on the.
Asking, and so far, I don't, I do not have any questions.
Thank you. And on the Chinese line?
Chinese, yeah, no.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go back to the raised hands. Blessing Adun, would you please unmute your mic and ask your question? Blessing, you should be able to unmute. Just give it one more second. Blessing, can you hear me? Oh, looks like you got it.
Hello?
Hello, yes, we can hear you. Yes, hi. There we go.
Hi, me?
I, yes, it's breaking up a little bit, but do you want to try asking your question?
Yeah.
Yeah, um.
Do you want to try asking your question?
Hello?
Yes, I can hear you.
Yes, I'm asking a question like, um, about the search rate to Nycha about the um, the payment, like, because I'm, I don't know, where about people that stay in one room? And is it the same payment or or your income?
Me and Jennifer.
So. I'm not, I just think, I think I understand your question. I'm gonna try to answer it, and if I did not understand it, please let me know, and I'll try to get a better one. So I think that you're asking, how will your your rent payment be calculated? Is that, is that what you're asking? Sure.
Yes.
So, so Robert from Nycha, Robert Teseraro, do you want to answer that question?
I apologize, Sam, I was on the chat answering a question. What's the question?
Yes, Robert.
I can take it. Robert, I can take it. It's okay.
Okay, thanks so much.
Yeah, no problem. So your rent's gonna be calculated just like it's calculated under public housing, right? So for public housing today, we take all of your household income and then we take any deductions that you might be entitled to, because HUD has a whole list of things that you can get deductions for. And then we get your adjusted gross income, and we take thirty percent of that and divide it by twelve. So it's a very, it's the, it's the same basic formula that works in Section Eight, so it's based on your household income.
Yes, and well, but if you don't have income, like you lost your job, and you're working, how essentially going to help you for that, though, or something?
Yeah, so make sure that you've reported zero income to Nycha. So make sure that you have reported to Nycha Property Management that you have no income. Is that, have you already done that?
Yeah.
Did you already tell Nycha that you have no income in your household?
Not, um, right now, but Nycha knows that. What I'm saying is that.
So great. So if Nycha Public Housing knows that, if Nycha Public Housing knows that, whatever you are currently paying today, when the property converts on the eighteenth, that will continue to be your tenant share portion of the rent until your next interim or annual with Nycha. There is no requirement to have income to be a Section Eight participant. Okay?
Okay, because now, uh, but, um, I want to call you like, um, where about HRA is paying your rent? Just to, or not?
So you're on public assist, you have public assistance, so you have a shelter allowance with HRA? Yes. If you have a shelter allowance with HRA, that is something that you report as part of your income to Nycha. And that, that that will be calculated differently after we convert, because Robert, I actually might need you on this one. The shelter allowances are no longer paid directly, right? So.
They're paid to the house to Lalo.
No, I know. They're paid directly right now to Nycha, but Nycha's not going to be property management after they convert. You know what happens with the shelter allowances?
Yeah, so sure. So that's gonna go to the the new PAC partner. So CNC management will be the recipient of your public assistance payments, and that'll happen after closing.
So that's all. Okay.
I don't understand. Can you explain for me?
And Blessing, I, so I want to give some more time. I I don't want to cut you off, and I, we definitely want to answer your question. So if you, if you, if you don't mind, would you, I'm gonna send you a chat right now. And if you could just send me your email address or the best contact number to reach you, we can make sure that we reach out to you directly and make sure that we answer all your.
Okay, 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 let me do that.
I'll, I'll send you a chat in just a moment. Thank you so much.
Hey, I'm sorry for the technical difficulties. I'm back on.
No worries. Okay, so we're gonna move on to the next question. Colleen Collins, would you please unmute and ask your question?
Good evening. How are you?
I'm great. Hi, Colleen.
Good. Um, our mailboxes are broken in the towers. What is gonna happen with our mailboxes?
Thanks for that question. I'm going to have Ellie Himmelstein answer that. Ellie is the lead, the project lead for the general contractor that will be completing the repair. So Ellie, would you mind answering a question about how, what will happen with broken mailboxes and mailboxes in general at the property as part of the rehab?
And how soon will security be on?
Sure. I, so I, so just to answer.
I can answer, yeah, I can answer part one on the, on the mailboxes. So, hi, Ms. Collins. So it'll be, it'll be two stages. As soon as the closing happens, we can start to evaluate which mailboxes are specifically broken at buildings one through seven, you know, Harlem River Houses, the low-rise building, and the the tower twenty-eight fifty, and we can do some interim repairs. We can order replacement doors that the the mail is able to be delivered. The longer term plan is as the renovations take place, we're gonna be replacing the boxes entirely. Twenty-eight fifty will have a larger lobby format, and all the forty-seven some odd entrances at Harlem River Houses will have the the mailboxes replaced in their entirety. So everyone will be issued a new key, and it will be, you know, like I said, brand new, brand new boxes.
Thanks so much. And Colleen, I'm, I'm sorry if I'm not pronouncing your first name correctly. I'm Ms. Collins.
That's okay.
You also asked a question about security, so there will be, I know, this is a common question, and just so I want to, I'm really glad you asked it. Security will be on site the the first day after, after the conversion. And security will be on site twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. I do, I do want to remind everyone that it's, we're really excited to provide both physical security, so actual, some, an actual, at least one person on the site. As well as, as part of the rehab, we're gonna be installing a very large number of security cameras that we'll be able to monitor. With that said, security does not change overnight, right? So this is something that will take time. But yes, we will, we will have security on site on day one after the closing. And I just saw a question in the chat that is related. Is there a way to contact security if there's, if there's an issue? The answer to that is definitely yes. I mentioned earlier in the presentation that we will be dropping off at at your household a a piece of paper that that has printed on it, all of the different resources that you will have access to. So really, what it's going to be is you could, you will be able to call one number. And once you call the number, it will say, for repairs, press one, or for leasing, press two. One of the options will be security, and that is the number that you will be able to call to 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 let people, to let our staff know about security concerns. And again, you will receive that contact sheet within the next week or so, so that you will have, you will have it in hand for for the closing.
While the renovations are going on, will the entry to the building be the front? Or will it change?
I'm, I'm not sure.
At the tower.
At the tower. So Ellie, Ellie, that's a, that's an interesting question. Ellie, do you mind addressing?
Yeah, you'll, you'll, you'll always be able to leave that of the front, the front of the building. That goes for the tower and also for the, the buildings one through seven at Harlem River Houses.
Okay.
And Colleen, I just want to, I just want to mention one other thing. So if you, I'm not sure if you've managed to come to our other town hall meetings. But I think it was, okay, so it was either last meeting or the meeting before. I think it may have been the meeting before. We showed a number of pictures of what the lobby will look like, as well as what the apartments will look like after the renovation. And I believe that one of the pictures shows, it might not be a direct view, but I think you can see it, the, what the mailbox system will look like after the, it's a rendering, like a, basically.
I've seen the picture.
Great.
But I just wanted to know during the renovations, would there be another, you know, would there be another for residents to go out of, but you just said that it's still gonna be the front, so that's good.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you for your questions. Okay. Next is, let's go to, hold on, let me just, okay, let's go to question from the caller whose number ends in four, two, zero, eight. You should be able to unmute.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Good evening.
So when I looked at the forms, it stated something about everything is gonna start in February. So is it gonna start in February or March? Because y'all keep switching the dates.
Sure. Yeah, it's a good question. Ellie, can you, again, I'll introduce Ellie Himmelstein from the the general contractor. Ellie, can you talk through the the schedule for construction and what residents can expect to see? Kind of starting in the beginning and then and then progressing into the spring and summer?
Sure. So unfortunately, and like Sam alluded to a little earlier, the day after closing, you know, everyone has been so patient up until now, ourselves included. We've been working on the design on this job for the last year and four months or so, but things do not happen on necessarily on day one. We have to start closing and bringing and bringing in our contractors and bringing in materials. But one of the immediate things that we want to start working on is lighting, exit signs, things related to life safety, making sure that all doors are secured. And as we get into warmer weather, you'll see that we'll start to work on the facades, repairing the masonry work, working on the roofing. We've already lined up materials that we can hit the ground, the ground running. There are multiple roof leaks, both at the tower and the low-rise buildings. And, you know, over the course of the duration of the the construction, you'll see us, you know, you'll see a lot of activity on the outside of the building, so dressing the building envelope, replacing all the windows, and slowly but surely getting into all the residents' apartments and doing a substantial amount of work, replacing kitchens and bathrooms and flooring, painting the entire unit, introducing new lighting in every single room, window treatments, new mechanical systems, which will provide heating and cooling, which the residents can control. You know, so an entire, an entire repair program, which is gonna take a good amount of time. And we're excited to, as we formalize and, you know, finish that schedule, we're gonna share a ton of information with all the residents. A ton of information, meaning you will know when things are gonna happen. It's never, you know, you will never open your door in the mean, in the morning, as long as you're reading the the notices and attending meetings that will be scheduled, you'll never be surprised by what's happening at Harlem River Houses. The management company and and ourselves as the general contractor will always over communicate and keep the residents very aware of what we're doing in your, in your home, as as it always should be. So just be a little more patient with us, and over the next several weeks, you know, we'll be posting notices and communicating as to what's happening, what's happening exactly when.
So I have another question. How is it, how is it that the tower, they don't have any gas? And one weekend at two eleven A, we didn't have any heat. Who took our boiler to replace it with a new one? And why would y'all wait till the dead of winter to do it? And I'm hearing either you guys did it or housing did it. Somebody did it and nobody wants to tell the truth. What's going on with that?
So for questions about the heating at, and and also cooking gas, so just for clarity, we have not started any work at Harlem River, any rehab work, either at the tower or the low-rise, nor have we taken over as property management. That starts at the the day after closing, which is February eighteenth. So up until that day, Nycha has been and will continue to be in charge of all building systems, all repairs. So I'd like to pass it over to Nycha. I'm not, Ian, I'm not Ian, Heather, Melissa, to talk through the boiler situation, the repairs that are ongoing for the cooking gas and the, and and the like. Nigel, do you want to answer that, please? Ian, Heather, Melissa, can you hear me?
I think that's a question for Ian. I, I actually don't know the context for that. If he's able to jump back on.
Ian, are you still with us?
See, this is not fair to the residents. Nobody, this is a valid question, and I don't think it's being answered. Like, Nycha was with us earlier, but now all of a sudden they not answer it. Somebody is doing something to the resident, and we are getting the short end of the stick, and I don't think it's fair.
No, I, I understand. It's really frustrating. Absolutely. I, I think there are a couple folks from Nycha still here. I think I ju, I just don't know the background necessarily for for what's happening at your.
Yeah, so I can, I can, I can talk about, I can talk about it a little bit to the extent that, I mean, I don't work for Nycha. And again, this has been a Nycha issue, that Nycha, Nycha's the property manager, and they're responsible for these items. What we have, what we have, what we do know is that Nycha has told us that the gas, the cooking gas at Harlem River Two, the tower, is scheduled to be fully repaired by April first. So our team's responsibility will begin on February eighteenth, so we will take over whatever repairs Nycha has not completed.
So how are residents in a tower being compensated when they don't have gas to cook?
Yes, so again, that's it.
What are they giving them? What do you call that thing?
Yeah, a hot, I believe, I believe Nycha has provided hot plates, yes. So again, Robert.
That's not enough, because they only give them one.
Yeah, Robert or, again, this crazy. I mean, I, I agree. I, you know, is, is Ian or Robert, are you able to answer this question?
This is Robbie. I mean, again, we we totally sympathize with the current situation, but again, this is why we're here tonight, because under PACT, this all changes, and we have CNC, and our PAC developers coming in to make your living conditions much better. Can't really speak to what's happening now. We totally understand, and we thank you for your patience, but please bear with us as we go through the transition. And again, things will get better under the PACT.
Thanks, Robert.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for that question. I want to move to the next question. Let's actually see in the chat. Okay, let's move to a question from the number ending in seven, nine, two, four. You should be able to unmute.
Yeah.
Hello, yes, we can hear you.
Am I unmuted?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hello? Yeah, I have several questions. I'll go fast. What, in order of the repairs being done, do you paint first and then all the other repairs get done? Because someone came, a painting inspector came, and I just told him to come next week on Thursday. So I should prepare after he sees the apartment. It, you know, I don't really need major paint jobs or plastering, because the plasterers came and, you know, said I didn't need plastering. But I also have some other, another question is that if the repairs are being done, I'd like to stay in my apartment, because the tenants are robbing me. I'm an artist, and I'm being robbed.
So I'm, so I'm gonna.
You know, and it's a horrible thing.
Yeah, thank you. I want to answer that question about the the order of repairs. Ellie, do you mind talking about, like, kind of how repairs are prioritized? Are you able to share some insight on that? And we can also ask Priscilla to weigh in on that, and Doreen.
Sure. What a lot of residents have been experiencing o, over the last six to nine months has been, you know, they've been contacted for HQS repairs, where Nycha or or our, you know, Harlem River Preservations Contractor has come in to do some minimal repairs, which have included painting and plastering work. Moving forward post-closing, when we schedule the substantial renovation within your unit, all units right now, the plan is to relocate the resident for a period of up to six weeks. And there'll be some, sorry, they'll, during the the course of that time, your, yes, your apartment will be repainted. But, no, we we don't typically start with the with the painting. We remove the, there's some demo involved. We remove the things in the bathroom and the kitchen, the existing tile, tubs, fixtures, cabinets, et cetera. And painting is is one of the last things that happen. But I guess the, to fast forward, the apartment that you move back into, your, your home, will be completely renovated. So when a resident comes back home after that six-week period, they will have a new bathroom, a new kitchen, and, you know, a freshly painted apartment, new flooring, and all the finishes that we've been talking about and showing photos of for, you know, over the last, you know, several months with the prior meetings.
Thanks, Ellie. And I just want to say one thing, and then we, I think we'll have time for just one more. Thanks, Ellie, and I just want to say one thing, and then we, I think we'll have time for just one more question. We did not talk today about the temporary move process, um, which Ellie just mentioned. We have talked about this at length in previous meetings, so if you have not attended previous meetings and you are in, and you need, want to know more about how the temporary moves will work, you can do one of uh, a number of things. You can go on our website, www.harlemriver.org, and go to Resident, the Resident Meetings tab, and you can listen to all of our other town hall meetings, and I believe uh, we've talked about it in several. I think the last three meetings, we've gone through all of the details about the temporary move process. We also just printed out a very extensive guidebook. Um, we designed it over the last three, four months and dropped it at every single apartment, which answers many, many frequently asked questions about the temporary move process. So you can refer to that, and if you can't find your copy, um, please do visit our office and we will provide you another one. Um, or once we start the conversion, once it happens, you can also speak directly to our staff. Um, you'll be able to call us and talk directly to us about the temporary move. And before any move occurs for your household, we will have one, a one-on-one meeting with you to make sure that we are addressing all the needs that you have. We understand the unit that you need to be in. Um, and we're making sure that you have the support you need, and just so everyone um remembers, all moves will occur within Harlem River Houses and Harlem River Two, so no one is moving outside of the development. It will be to a vacant unit that has already been fully renovated and it's completely furnished. We will move your bed to the unit if you need. Um, but we will work with you, long story short, we will work with you directly um to make sure that you are accommodated and comfortable um during the time that we renovate your unit. Um, so I'm gonna take one more question, because we are at time, but I I know there's a lot of people. Um, would Lee please unmute and share your question?
Hello?
Yes, I can hear you.
Yes, um, so I had a, good evening, everyone. I had a question about the job opportunities. Um, I was, I took advantage of the Reese um liar in October twenty twenty, so I I have my OSHA thirty. And I am currently working in construction. I love an opportunity to work here. Are there still um jobs available? Because you guys mentioned that twenty people took advantage of the current opportunity. Do um, are there still more positions available? And then what is the pay rate?
Yes, that is a great question. So to answer your question simply, yes, there are more positions available, and we will continue to offer training, uh, a training to residents at no cost to you. So if you are interested in so, in this, um, in in an opportunity, either a permanent opportunity with CNC or a construction opportunity, we really encourage you to either apply directly for one of the positions that you see on our website, www.harlemriver.org. Or you can come to our office, which is at the old library, and just drop off your resume. Um, and we can contact you directly. I, the Judy Gerena, who manages the um, the hiring and training um program, had to drop off this meeting, so I can't answer your question off the top of my head about the wage rates. I'm so sorry about that. Um, but please do give, provide your contact information. I would suggest dropping off your information or your resume in our Dropbox. There's just like a little a little box um hung outside of the door of the library, the old library, and we will get back to you um with with information. Um, it's a great question, and that's exciting. We're really excited. We, as Judy said, we had twenty folks, uh, twenty residents already take advantage of the free training that we provide for OSHA, for their OSHA card. And we're really invested in having residents get jobs as a part of this process. Um, I see, uh, and thank you for the question, Lee. I see just one quick question. It says in the chat, will the office still remain at the old library after the conversion? So I just want to answer that, because that's a really good question. Um, so temporarily, yes, the old library will be our our office, the the CNC office. However, the CNC team will be moving into what is the permanent property management office, the property management office that you you all residents know. Um, within a few weeks, it's just gonna take a little bit to to move all of the the computers and and equipment and everything that they need to get into there. So for the time being, after the conversion, probably for a few weeks, it will be at the old library. And then we will move to the old office and we will provide um a notice to residents informing them of that um, of that move, so they know that we're um, we're moving to, we're in the new spot. Okay, so with that, we are actually five past. I'm so sorry we didn't get to all the questions. Um, this is, oh, as always, not the only, not the last time, but not nearly the last time you'll you will, opportunity you'll have to engage with us. In fact, it is really just the beginning. I'm really excited to get started um on the project. Um, really excited for the conversion next week. Um, and we're really happy that all of you were uh came here today. We will be posting a recording of this meeting after um, after, probably the week after next on our website. We really encourage you to listen or refer your neighbors and friends. Um, and thank you so much for being here. We really appreciate it. Wishing you all a safe and happy evening. Thanks so much.